Mo Truff is going to be running a little late, just because he was finishing up a prior meeting at the school district. So we could start, I'm pretty sure if he has any questions, he can follow up with the fire department, just so we can be courteous and everyone's time. It is a kind of a hefty budget session today. We have quite a few to get through. So we're all here. So the floor is yours. Thank you.
Well, I know my plan.
Page number?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Page number thirty?
Well, I was gonna probably thirty-seven in the budget handout.
Oh, okay.
So you're in the budget handout.
Are you giving us a handout? Or did we already get it?
Oh, do you need copies? They were the ones we gave you a few weeks ago.
Oh, that's probably at home.
Well, we can put it up here.
Okay, as long as I have, I mean, I have the notebook just probably in my pile that's going.
Yeah, we'll probably jump around a little bit. But I don't have a big fancy, never do have a big fancy presentation.
So what page is that?
That's thirty-seven in the handout.
I thought this is it. No.
Our runs are on par to be the same as they were last year or a little higher. So we're doing in our, depending on how the storm numbers come in, I think we're gonna be a little higher than we were last year. We, but we made it to every call during the snowmageddon, as everybody's calling it. I believe our numbers, our budget numbers are real close to what they were last year. My plan was to give a little bit of money back in some of my accounts this year, but with snowmageddon, I still think I'm gonna give a few dollars back, but it's not as big as it was, just because of, of the snowstorm. But that's, that's the plan. And I think, if I remember correctly, we pretty much held everything the same as last year. So.
And one other difference is that the contract increases.
Right.
Than we anticipated this year?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, with the award, the arbitration award was.
Five point seven five?
Not favorable to the city. It was five point seven five for retroactive to the first of 2024, and then three point two five for 2025. So in that aspect, yeah, we're, we're not holding, we're not the same. But.
I did have one question. Under the workers' comp insurance for the 2025, it's listed at like one eighty-eight, but in the previous years, we were around like two sixty. We don't have the 2024 numbers. That was just like a, that's a big drop where it was trending upwards and past budgets. And so I just didn't understand like why it trended down for this one.
Well, we're gonna have to check into that.
So that forty twenty?
I mean, that's, that's actual, isn't it? I mean, because we're self-insured?
Right. It's an estimate per headcount. So we're gonna have to look into that. It comes from the group insurance, estimates and the headcount. So I'll, I'll look.
Priorities, we did have estimates this year. We were able to get with our broker and actually discuss these numbers. So priorities, we did not do that.
Okay.
So yeah, hopefully this is more accurate.
I'm gonna tell him Chuck got it, but.
He'll give him a minute to get situated.
He's putting it back.
Thank you for making time for us today. I mean, we're wrapping up another meeting. So I appreciate you being here.
We're on page forty, forty-six of the budget.
So you, I think the only thing that went up in our budget this year is our training budget. It went up by eight thousand dollars. And I, I don't expect that to stay up there because we're transitioning a lot of our.
I thought you were saving money on that because of the Columbus deal.
We are, but we still have a lot of people from before the Columbus deal that have to complete their training. And the cost of training is like everything else going up.
And that shifts the burden of the cost of the training actually from overtime to the training budget because we're paying Columbus to train the firefighters instead of our own people on overtime. So you'll see the savings in the overtime budget.
Eighty thousand cut there.
And you would have seen it this year if it hadn't been for the snowfall.
Everybody that didn't go to Columbus is still working through all of their steps and all of their training. So by the end of 2025, we won't have those, might have a couple, but most everyone will be through all of that stuff and everybody will be going to Columbus. So we won't, we won't have that anymore. So I don't, I don't expect it to be, to continue to rise. Our fleet is getting newer, which I'm hoping that our maintenance expenses will come down a little bit, but we're still running an aged fleet. We've got two years or a little less before the next new rig comes. And then probably four years before the next one. But we're still running two, two thousand and three trucks as frontline rigs. And then they'll go to the back line and we'll have newer rigs in the frontline. But there again, we're, all of our backup rigs are gonna be two thousand and three. So they're already twenty-one years old. They won't have the wear and tear on them that they do as frontline rigs, but they're still gonna be there. So and as long as prices don't keep going up, like I said, I'm hoping that the 2026 budget, our maintenance costs have gone down. Everything else, I said, everything else has stayed the same. I don't expect, there's, you know, all of the other things up at the top there are things that I have no control over the wages, the deferred comp, the tool allowance, the, you know, the cost of gear and all that stuff. But I think we're holding our own in that aspect. Our runs, like I said, are gonna be the same as, should be the same if, but I should say they're not gonna be less than last year. They're probably gonna be more, but right around the same. There is in this handout, you can, there are pictures of our, of our older rigs of, you know, what our fleet was and the age of them. This year in the budget, we did add a position, a second assistant chief, because Chief Purchase and I, the two of us simply cannot keep up or move forward. This, this has been a problem for years and it has caught up to us. And we're trying, but our run tables are old and need to be addressed desperately. Our EMS protocols need to be addressed. Our fire run protocols are old. We need to address that stuff. We are, we're still doing it. I mean, we still make it to calls. And we're holding an average of four minutes, which is what the standard is. So and we're still getting everything done, but it's getting harder and harder and harder. And there's just no time between the two of us to move forward with everything that the fire department needs to keep up with the times, I guess, and to streamline our operations and make them more efficient. So that's, that's the only addition.
What efficiencies are you looking at?
Right now, we have, we're, we're running a lot of calls. I mean, if you look at the run, we were, we're up about three thousand runs a year since COVID. And we're, the way our run tables are, we have rigs that are running farther than they should be because of the, all the changes in, in our response zones and stuff like that, that, and we have rigs that should be running harder. So we're running the wheels off some rigs more so than they should be. The other ones should be taking that load so that it's evenly distributed. It makes more efficient times and it's less wear and tear on one rig where the other one is, is not. Just trying to even things out, make it more efficient and more timely. With the EMS crisis and all of the extra runs, because there aren't any ambulances available, we're trying to address, adjust our EMS protocols as to what we go on and what we don't, and whether it's priority one or priority two, so that there are some calls that maybe we just don't need to go on. We, we will go, if there's no ambulance, we're gonna go on call, we do go on calls. We normally wouldn't because there's no ambulance available and the people need help. So we're gonna go. But if there are ambulances available, we're still going on some calls that maybe we shouldn't anymore. Same with the fire protocols and that, a lot of that is with the fire is, are we sending too many rigs or are we sending not enough rigs? What, each, each type of call gets a certain response, whether it's one pumper, whether it's the closest company, the closest company could be the ladder truck because they, you know, it's a call they can handle because they don't need water or potentially need water because the ladder trucks don't carry, don't have a water tank. Some, on some of them, we send two. Maybe we can adjust that to one instead of two. I mean, we have.
Does any of that lead to cost efficiency for the city?
Yes. Well, less fuel. I mean, if we're only sending, we send three pumpers and a ladder to some, or four pumpers and a ladder, depending on the information we have. If we, anything we trim is less fuel, less wear and tear. So it's just.
Less backfilling?
Less backfilling. Yeah, it's just, you know, makes good sense not to be, sort of wearing out our equipment and our people for things that we don't need to. The world's changing, or changed a couple of years ago, let's put it that way.
Chief, how do you know, how are you communicated to that an ambulance is not available?
Dispatch lets us know that there's no ambulances. Because the nine one one center also dispatches emergency care. And actually, they, they dispatch all the ambulances in Erie County. And the way the ambulance system is, if you're in ambulance in Gerard and there's no other ambulances anywhere and there's a call in the city, that ambulance from Gerard's coming to the city.
Wow.
And there's a good chance that emergency care is not in the city. They're out in Corey because there's no ambulances in Corey and there's a call. You have to go, if you're in, if an ambulance is in service, it has to go where it's needed. Doesn't matter where that is, as long as it's in their response area, which is Erie County. So.
I do think that this raises something that we as a council should really be helping and be paying attention to because the, the fire crisis that they're having just with, I mean, having to respond when there's no EMS and the EMS crisis in response to other municipalities who are or are not contributing, there's gonna create some type of vacuum and avoid the, either police are gonna, I mean, somebody has to show up. And so I think we as, we should be more proactive in being involved in this because it's ultimately gonna fall back if we're not cognizant on, on the city. If, if other municipalities are setting standards or protocol before we do, it's gotta go somewhere. And so for us to just be aware.
And that's one of the things that we're trying to address with the, the type of calls that we're running on for EMS. A lot of them are social service type calls. We've developed, examined all the resources that we have available to us in Erie County. And we developed, put lists on the fire trucks so that when they show up these calls that are really social service type calls, where the ambulance isn't coming because they don't have an ambulance, we're able to go there and just, instead of just telling the person, sorry, we can't help you, we're giving them referrals also. So that's, you know, inefficiencies, trying to decrease the number, the frequent flyers are calling when it's a social service type need.
Do you have enough firefighters right now?
Yes. And you can always use more, but right, you know, we're, we're doing, we're doing, we're holding our own. And that, adjusting our EMS protocols is not just the city of Erie adjusting. We, Erie County nine one one is part of a consortium of, I believe it's seven counties. And if I want to change an EMS protocol, the whole consortium has to agree to it. So it's not just calling up and saying, listen, we're not going on this type of call. Take it off our run table. Because they're all, a lot of calls are, it's difficulty breathing. That's a pretty broad range. So I want to, I can say, I want to take this type out of that group. So they'll adjust the whole group of difficulty breathing calls. I don't know how to explain it. So a lot of calls are lumped together.
When you say seven counties, well, we probably have four or five counties in that list, but there's six thousand people. There's probably not another city comparable to us after Zoom in that area?
No.
And then we're hamstrung on processes based on what all these potunk areas need?
Yeah. I mean, I believe they, when, when this all started, nine one one, you know, and everything, the whole state is divided up into these groups. They sat down and wrote out the, the protocols. And it's, it's not that it's impossible, but you have to go through the process of saying, I don't want to respond, I don't think we should be responding to this type of call. And they all have to agree to it. And I've talked to a lot of different chiefs and they're like, yeah, I don't know why we go on that call. Well, because it's in there. And somebody has to take the time to go through the process to get it out.
That's one of those things where our city population is probably more than bottom three or four counties combined. And then we're hamstrung by their decisions. That's the worst part.
So, but that's, you're gonna go to the state to change that. So we do have one rig on order. It won't be here until the fall of twenty-six. That's, we had a state grant that we use as a down payment because time was running out to, to spend that money on a rig. So that's ordered. We just got an LSA grant for five hundred thousand dollars for a rescue pumper. So we're gonna start working on specs for that. We probably won't order that till the end of next year. There's a lot of things we're looking at, the possibility, electric or hybrid fire trucks. There's a possibility, we're gonna look into that and see if that's a possibility for us. It may not be, but we're gonna, we're gonna take a hard look at that. And hopefully by the end of next year, we have an idea of what we're gonna get, maybe a set of specs started so we can order that. But that'll be, once we do order it, it'll be three years before we see it. Who knows? Maybe by the end of next year, they'll have shortened the time, wait time, it'll only be two and a half years. Or it could be three and a half or four years. The times have been fluctuating. So that's, that's our plan there. We're working on Miller Brothers, trying to get that all moving. So hopefully, probably not 2025, but sometime in 2026, we should be moved into there and out of Marsh Street. Because Marsh Street continues to deteriorate.
Now, the Miller Brothers has a flat roof and then we had all that snow. Is there a problem with leaking in there? Has anyone checked that building out?
Yes, we've checked it out and there are a few problems, but nothing that, I guess, wasn't in the plan to be addressed. The, the whole complex was gonna get a new roof as we develop it. So we would rather there aren't leaks, but it's not something that we didn't plan on. The whole complex was getting a new roof. So. that we didn't plan on. The whole complex was getting a new roof. So. Guys have any questions for us?
No. I mean, your presentation is very easy to follow, and you're not asking for any new people, and you're not.
Well, we did ask for one.
One, but outside of that need for efficiency.
There's, there's much better benefits to firefighters than administrative people.
Right.
And this is, I mean, this isn't someone's going to be holding a hose in any house fires, right? Is there any reason to think that you might be better off or more cost efficient to address this position with an administrative position that would be, you know, outside of the, what is it, Act 87 or whatever it is, Act 89, the emergency benefits?
Act 111?
Maybe. What's the one that makes sure that you guys have strong pension benefits and can retire at a responsible age, given the, the challenges that you face in your job? Is that Act 111?
Act 111 is the, we can't strike, we, we have binding arbitration, and there's Act 205 is a pension one. There are several acts.
I'll look it up later. I think it's Act 89, but the one that gives you guys better benefits for pensions and retirements. Is there any reason to think that this administrative position can be addressed outside of, you know, emergency response type of qualifications?
Well, they would be on the same level as Chief Purchase and I. They're going to come from the fire service because a lot of the responsibilities and a lot of the things they're going to do, they're going to do other things just than what I had said. So they need to be, they need to come from the fire service to understand all that stuff.
Okay. If someone's not from the fire service, I don't understand, so I'll take your word.
And it's not, they're going to, they already have those benefits. So it's not somebody new coming and getting those benefits. It's somebody that already has them. So it's not, we're not adding to that.
So you're adding or promoting? I lushed, chief.
Well, we would promote.
First you said add, then you said promote. I think both. So you're going to.
We're going to promote from the inside. And then what I guess I meant was, we're not going to add another spot in those pension benefits that isn't already there. Because we're going to be promoting someone.
No confusion at all.
No.
I got you.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Anyone else have any questions? No? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming to.
Thank you for everything you all did during the snow crisis.
Yes. Thank you for everything you have done.
A fire truck pulled up and did the fire hydrant across the street. And my husband and I, we just physically cannot do that. And no one in our neighborhood did it either. And you guys did it.
We've been out, we're still out because there's, what, 2,200 hydrants in the city? Takes a long time to shovel out 2,200. So we're still out there every day looking for them. We were hampered originally by the fact that, I told the guys, you've got to go out and do hydrants. Don't go down any street that you don't think, you're not sure you can get down. Because I don't need you, we had enough trucks stuck during the height of it going on calls. I don't need you getting stuck or sliding into a car to shovel a hydrant. So we're out in the areas that we can get to now, just because we don't know what we're going to get Thursday, Wednesday night, Thursday and Friday. And right now, everything's thawing. And Wednesday night into Thursday, it's supposed to drop into the low to mid twenties. So everything's going to be a chunk of ice. So.
I know, I know. It's not connected, but do you want a brief rundown of the happenings last week?
I mean, you can, if council would like to know in case there are any people reaching out to them.
Yeah, I mean, we, Chief Purchase was at the Emergency Operations Center at the county for, what, 10 days?
Long time.
I was the boots on the ground here in the city. Communication was key. But there was a lot going on. We made it to every call that came in. Our guys had to walk a block or two blocks to get the calls, shovel their way in. They carried patients out a block or whatever to the ambulances, helped dig the ambulances out when they got stuck. A lot of our trucks, when they got stuck, they called and let us know that they were stuck so we'd get help on the way. But then, you know, I don't want to say half the time, but almost half the time, they were able to dig themselves out before so that they could get back in service. We had extra crews on for that reason. Calls took longer, trucks were getting stuck, and we were busy.
Did you have any injuries with your men, women?
There was one reported shoulder strain, did not seek, there was one report of a shoulder strain that did not seek treatment as of yesterday.
So.
It stretched appropriately.
But you can add to that of all the goings on that you dealt with up there?
It was an amazing experience, my first time when acting in that role for disaster. There was a lot of moving parts that seemed that many of the county wasn't completely familiar with. A lot of it was funding. There was a lot of misunderstandings about funding.
There still are.
Still are. Pima, the presentation we got initially from Pima was there's a process to go through to apply for these resources that the city was badly in need of. We were needing extra, we were needing tow trucks, we were needing plows, front loaders, we were needing a lot of equipment because our equipment was breaking. Simply couldn't manage the amount of heavy snow we had. They burned through a year's worth of chains. And as the only representative from the city that was at the EOC, I'm a firefighter, not a streets guy, and I'm trying to identify resources for their chains, the type of plow trucks that they're needing, the front loaders. And they have a really specific criteria when you request this equipment. And so going through the process, we kept, we'd get denied, and we'd have to go back through figuring out what the problem was. At the end of the day, we were under the belief, or we were under the belief that there was $3 million worth of funding. So thankfully, we did not approve these extra resources to come in right away. Because when Pima denies them, then they send you to a contractor, says the contractor can meet your needs at this rate. Again, I don't know anything about rates and contracts and what things cost. We were told that they would likely pay for these things, but there was no guarantee. So we didn't, we only pulled, we only called in one outside resource, and that was tow trucks because we badly needed them. Everything else, we waited on until clarification as to how they were getting paid. And then we found out we would likely not get any of that money, that $3 million was for the state to give to Pendot and the Pennsylvania State Police. And now, we still eventually got those resources, but they came from the state when the state was done with their obligation. They'd bring them into the city for a short period of time and then take them out, or they're planning to come to the city, and then they'd take them back. So there was a lot of coordination that was being done on a multi-agency role. Very complicated.
Thank you.
We did make it through. We worked together well in the city. I had my mechanics down to the municipal garage helping them over the weekend and the first of the week. If I had something they needed, you know, we worked, we always have. But, you know, we continue to work when, when it, when the time comes, we get it, we get the job done. That's what we're here for.
Did you happen to contact any of our state reps when you ran into the funding and payment?
We, we did not. I know that Renee was in contact with all of our representatives and some other contacts she had. The county executive was in contact with, you know, the political side of it, looking for funding and looking for answers, you know. Just tell us what it is. Don't say maybe. What is it? So, and I heard today at a meeting, in a task force meeting, that they're still working through some of the approval process for this disaster. So, maybe, still, possibly?
Let's just hope that whatever we're supposed to receive in the next couple of days, we're able to handle without any issues. Because at this rate.
The predictions are, maybe, but they're, what they're calling for for snow, we can handle on a regular, you know, we do on a regular basis. But there's also predictions that we're going to get very little because it's going to stay over the lake. Or, like everything else, oh, the wind shifted, and instead of the eight to 12 that we thought, we're getting 16 to 24. So I'm hoping for the staying out over the lake myself.
I think that after what we, we received a couple of weeks ago, I think we're, we're prepared for anything, but also, we're just hoping for it to be over.
Yes.
Six, six to 12 inches and 40 mile per hour winds as of 3 o'clock this afternoon was their expectation.
Sounds light compared to what we were handling a couple of weeks ago. So let's just hope for.
Unless those winds blow it the wrong way. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good rest of your night.
Thank you.
Then who's next?
List it.
Public Works?
I can't see.
You have some more on there?
My shoulders.
You have some more on there?
Yeah.
Public Works.
Yeah, what's that?
Page 50.
Yep, that's where we're at. So.
Page 50 in the budget?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Page, Public Works budget, we'll begin on a general fund, page 50 in your budget book. This would be the office of the director. And in this, in this office, I believe the only notable change is line item 4043. Me and myself usually attend, usually one educational or training event, seminar conference per year. Historically, we noted that, that line item was a, was zero. So we were asking for a $2,000 allocation for that training. And besides that, I don't believe there's anything in the director's office that is really different from last year. Yes, yeah. We're both engineers, so we, we've gone to at least one conference usually, or training seminar every year for a long time. So we felt that that, like to have that line item, something put in for that. So I believe that would cover us both to go to like one, one event, usually within the state of Pennsylvania, like a car trip. So. Any other questions on the, okay. Move right over to Bureau of Engineering, the next page. What I'll do here is just hit a couple highlights of each office, some projects that we accomplished in 2024, maybe a couple that we're going to look forward to in 2025. I won't go over all the dollar amounts unless council wants to hear all the, you know, figures on those. I have most of them here. So Bureau of Engineering, we're continuing to work on the Police Department Central Operations Improvements project, the Coquah Bridge replacement, the downtown State Street, streetscape. We currently awarded, I believe it's phase three of that project in the fall for just over a million dollars. And that would cover the stretch from second to fourth. That's a combination of CDBG and RAC funding. And then, we're currently designing the final phase, which would take us from Fourth Street up to North Park Row. And then that entire project would be done essentially from 12th down to second. It's been a multi-year project that has been in development for a long time. The reconstruction on East Lake Road, that was an LSA grant that we received. That's projects currently in design, half a million dollars between East Avenue and Pennsylvania Avenue. 2024, we did curb ramps, about half a million dollars. It was a combination of ARP and CDBG funding. And then three ARP projects I'll mention that the Bureau of Engineering worked on in 2024, two pump station replacements for sewage lift, one at Chautauqua Boulevard at the foot of Chautauqua, and then the other one is Perry's Landing. Southeast Erie area stormwater improvements, that project's in preliminary design. And then the other one with ARP was West Eighth Street sewer re-lining between Washington and Liberty. Those sewers were in really bad shape out there, and we were able to use the ARP money to, to re-line those rather than digging them up. Good news as of late, we received, we just got word that we received another LSA, the Commonwealth Financing Authority, for $750,000. And that would be for the West Eighth Street roadway reconstruction between Raspberry and Liberty. Budget wise for engineering, we have, we have a lot going on in that office, and we're continuing to be short-staffed in there. We are asking for a $50,000 professional service line item under 4041. A couple of things to note there is, up until a couple of years ago, we always had a, a two-man survey crew in the Bureau of Engineering. Those jobs were eliminated. We're, this, this here would really help us with surveying services that we could contract that out to a licensed surveyor. Also, just technical assistance with all these engineering projects. I won't go into a lot of detail unless council wants to hear, but we, we have a lot on our plate in that office. And there's a lot of specialized things that really we need to have outside assistance sometimes brought in on a consulting basis to, to help out.
Can he expand?
Yeah, I'd like some more detail on that. I mean, that's a pretty big jump, so I'd like more detail.
Okay. Quite, quite honestly, on that one there, we get into a lot of structural things at times that we need structural engineers for. In particular, Miller Brothers complex, we've identified some things up there that we're going to need some assistance on. That's going to be in addition to, you know, the actual project, architectural services that we're currently going out for.
Did you accept a bid for that architectural services?
The RFPs were, are all in. We did some, we pared it down to four firms, and then we did some individual reviews, sit downs with each one of those presentations that they gave us. And the final decision has not been made yet.
Okay. That's what I assume.
And you're, you're talking about just sustaining the building until we are able to remodel it?
That's correct. Yes.
I asked a question, why not? We're from 10 to four, the interviews, what do you wait for to fix it?
That's a good question. We were, we were pretty close, really, up until the Thanksgiving and the snowstorm hit. We were, we were out, honestly, just trying to get everybody in the same room to hash through these four, and then we're going to make a decision. But after the Thanksgiving and then into the snowstorm, we just haven't been able to reconvene on it. But I would expect that to happen pretty soon.
I heard that snowstorm caused that Dell's guy to fall in the ball yesterday, too. I want to claim that. I want to claim that.
Other than that, the Bureau of Engineering, uh, we did ask for a slightly larger increase for the project engineers this year. Um, we're trying to remain competitive with salaries there. We've had a vacancy in that office for, oh, about a year and a half, so we we did ask for a a larger increase for for that individual. Actually, there's.
I'm actually seeing a decrease.
Well, no, no, the last, the last salary on that list.
The last salary, the the project engineer.
Got you, thank you.
Ideally, how many should we have in the offices there? And how much, how many are?
Well, we, we're asking for to maintain the complement, but these aren't all, there's a. Yeah, no change in complement of FTEs.
It's five.
Five, but I do see, unless unless councils is different, I believe there might be one error there, there should be, does your book have casual labor fifty-six?
Yeah, it's in there, fifty-six.
Oh, mine's mine's cut off, so it's at fifty-six fives in there?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I don't have that on mine. That, yeah, so that's that's reflected in that top number three ninety-two. We have a part-time individual in that office that's been, um, helping out, uh, as he's an engineer, uh, an engineer. So that's what, that's what that one there is.
How many, would you like, just one person or?
Ideally, we'd like to, we're trying to get back to full complement, so we're actually down. Two, three? Yeah.
That's what I thought you needed people.
We do, definitely, and that's one of the asks.
Year-to-date number here, we're at one hundred and seventy-eight, we're not going to hit our budget this year because we don't have half our staff.
Right.
Well, except, why is that a problem, finding people to work?
The wage.
It's the wages, it's the, it's the, uh, it seems like the Northwest Pennsylvania is is difficult for civil engineers, um, getting them to relocate to come here. We've had a couple that that had an issue with the fifteen-mile radius restriction. Most of, most, seems like most of the luck we have are with with Erie ice.
That's police and fire, isn't it?
No, it's all.
It's everybody.
All employees, all employees need to live in.
Unless you want to change it.
Good thing we better not change it. I could even look at it.
So. Yeah, we we even talked to a few that weren't too far out, but they were, you know, they were obviously more than fifteen miles, so.
I mean, in this job market, that's, that's why the other unions were asking us for it. It's really only the police chief that had an issue. We could do it for everyone except for police, and I think Eric would be happy.
I'm open to having the conversation, especially if we're having issues.
And that's, that's back to Councilman Nelson's question about the fifty thousand is really, if we cannot, it's it's a combination of lack of personnel right now, but if if need be, we'd like to have that shift to professional services to hire the outside help we need. And but I I mentioned a couple of examples, but it really could be any multitude of functions we might need some outside consulting help on.
Have we worked with apprentice-type things with GAN or Bearin?
We have, yeah.
Did it help burn people in here? Sometimes you can get somebody in on a program, they stay.
Yeah, it's, yeah, getting them to actually, after graduation, say, that's the challenge, you can have to, a lot of times they 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 leave or they go somewhere else.
Because now they have experience, so now they're worth more.
Would it be possible just to get a clear breakdown, I guess, just for the the way my brain processes and works of that fifty thousand, just like, kind of like what you shared tonight, it's like, just kind of go back, it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand plus some change, increase, to just like.
Yes, absolutely.
Head around it, thank you.
Yeah, we can, we'll work on something for that.
Are the curb ramps almost done in Erie?
Uh, yes, um, well, yes, as in, as in, as in our, uh, our requirement under the consent decree for the, what we used kind of termed the, um, retroactive curb ramps, so we had to do as part of the consent decree by the court, by the court. As we pave new streets, we end up with new curb ramp triggers, so it is, it is ongoing. It's kind of a yes and no answer, so we've, we've done those ones, but every year we still have new, new curb ramps that get triggered by paving that we then construct. So there's a lot more out there to do. Any other questions on that office?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that as long as you get us the breakdown for the fifty thousand, everyone's going to be content, we just want to see where the money's going to be spent.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, over to traffic, page fifty-two. Uh, I just hit a couple of highlights here for for council. We have three signal replacement projects, French Street, State Street, and Eighteenth Street. It's a combination of funding between Greenlight Go, Liquid Fuels, LSA, multimodals, um, plus some city match in there. Total cost is about five point two million. We have a downtown Erie active transportation project that's TASSA-funded for four hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, safer routes to schools and parks, it's another TASSA at one point four million, and then, by the way, that stands for Transportation Alternatives Set Aside, abbreviated as TASSA. And then, uh, APS Funds and Controllers, that's an Artly grant, uh, automated red lights enforcement, okay, uh, for three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars.
Is that the one where they can ticket you from the automation? That you're doing as a support?
It's just Philadelphia uses that, so they, the funds that they get from, those tickets are distributed through the state.
Everybody.
Those aren't allowed in their class city yet.
Not us.
Budgetarily, I believe the only, I don't know if we really have any changes in there. Um, FTEs remain the same at at five. What was that? Oh, communications actually went from ten to, that's a good point, ten thousand down to two thousand.
Why was that?
Do you know why that was? Sure, it's just some added zero. Do you have any recollection of why that?
We were using those to pay for the phones and iPads and everything.
And ended up being, oh, for the one time.
One time.
Okay, yeah, that was the, that was, okay, that was the technology as part of the the stamp project. So it, that dropped down to two, to fund it going forward.
So you're going to spend the rest of that ten thousand, because so far you're only spending eight hundred of it?
Second quarter by the end of the year.
Yeah, just, those just went on the.
Council General?
Yeah.
Stamp devices?
We just, we, they just came in, yes.
The repair maintenance, so forty thirty-five at forty fifty-six. That, that's, because I'm just like when in the description, that just sounds like it's just saying the same thing over. How are they different?
Well, I'm sorry, what were they?
So forty thirty-five, so the repair maintenance supplies, and then, okay, no, it's the service.
Fifty-six is a service.
I answered my own question once I said the words out loud. Yep. I went right to the description instead of just reading them.
All right, that one's easy.
Okay, Bureau of Streets, page fifty-three of your budget book. That very, that's just very busy bureau, I'll just, I'll just hit quickly on on that one. Paving for the twenty twenty-four, uh, construction season, we had a CDBG contract project, we had a liquid fuels contract project, um, and then we had, uh, Bureau of Streets, um, doing all their in-house paving with our forces. That was divided up into a couple of sections, basically Bureau of Streets within CDBG and then Bureau of Streets in the, uh, outlying non-CDBG areas, with a grand total this year of, um, almost two and a half million dollars. For that office, uh, the budget there, small increase in, um, forty twenty-four tool allowance and uniform benefits. You can see we were over budget there a little bit, the end of October, it's all contractual. So we bumped that to seventeen, and then, again, we did bump education and training, I think we did that in the, when we did the sewer budget as well, we asked for a little more, and we, this one, we, we bumped it up, uh, a little bit to three thousand, you can see we were also, uh, over the budget of six hundred dollars as of the end of, uh, October. I think that was really the only changes in Bureau of Streets.
What's your biggest challenge going forward?
Biggest challenge moving forward? Well, I, I'm sorry.
What do we need, what don't we have?
Well, it's, yeah, I mean, the the current snow event obviously showed, um, you know, some, a big help that we we had with the Bureau of Streets as we brought in those, uh, all those seven to eight grader crews that were working around the clock, but that's not something we would go out and purchase, I don't believe, is all those road graders, so luckily we were able to get those from contractors, PennDOT. What was a big help was a, an icebreaker that we purchased a few years ago. That piece of equipment, um, mounted on a, on a loader really, really was pretty remarkable, so I would like to explore maybe whether a couple more of those would be helpful. The road graders were invaluable, but those were kind of really a one-off brought in for this event, uh, because we really just had to scrape off that layer that everybody was driving with, a foot thick in someplace, some places more.
Yeah, you get about ten miles an hour going up Liberty Cherry.
Yeah.
And I want to tell you, these guys were working twenty-four, seven, they were taking a couple of hours to take a nap, and they were.
Yeah, it was.
They went for, what, a week?
Yes, Thanksgiving long.
Let's say that we didn't get the rain, do we have any plan for where that snow goes? Do we use fields that aren't being used?
You mean to like actually truck?
To remove it.
Because the sidewalks is so dangerous when you're driving and you come up to an intersection and you can't see, and you might go out with a prayer, and you don't know what's going to happen. So I was just wondering if we can get rid of the snow somehow.
I don't honestly think that's, that's possible on any type of large-scale operation.
You used to do that in the old days.
I mean, I've seen machines.
Past, you used to, uh, none of them makers feel all the football fields, uh, other than stadium, but all the football fields, that's where it was.
Softball fields, too, yeah.
Yep, Twenty First Street, uh, open field.
And we've seen, um, other municipalities that have machines that'll literally suck the the snow up after it's plowed and put it in a dump truck and they remove it outward. I know that we say that some of our streets are too small and too narrow, but like we can push it to the main roads, because right now we have an issue where once it gets to a point that you can't see, it's a dangerous hazard on top of the fact that we're asking people to shovel their sidewalks, which is next to impossible when we have this kind of amount of snow, so then we have big boulders on the edges of every corner and we can't see. Unsafe to continue on this way of, this is the way it is, and this is the way that we do it, um, that's not a good enough response when we just experience a crisis to this magnitude, and when other municipalities such as, uh, you know, uh, I think they showed Canada actually removing their snow, and they also showed other third-class areas that were showing us videos, um, on TikTok that it is possible, so we need to like look into, and hopefully there's grant money out there, especially after this natural disaster.
Problem with Erie is that it's Erie, and the places you're talking about, like Marquette, Michigan, things like that, they get ten feet at a time sometimes, so they have all that stuff. We haven't had, you know, cloud jockeys stopped working for the last two years because, uh, they weren't needed, and now the wind shifts in the wrong way, and we're in the thunder. So it's, it's nobody's fault, it's just heck of a situation to be in. You guys are doing a great job.
Well, we'll cuss something like that out. I have to look into it.
Like two of those places, it was the white fluffy stone that they were kicking up and blowing those trucks. I don't know if it was just, I'd like to see how those things work on this.
Well, I, I heard, I heard during the, uh, the meetings, the emergency meetings, that this was heavier and deeper, and it it was just, do you want to describe that? It's just more than our.
Well, it was definitely a heavy one, snow, absolutely.
We've never gotten a snow like this before.
Nineteen fifty-six. I was ten years old, I remember it, Thanksgiving.
We got more in two thousand seventeen, but this was worse.
This was worse.
It was wet and heavy. The snow was wet and heavy.
Yeah, it was a wet, heavy snow.
The ground was still warm, that's what happened, you know, the top snow was light.
Well, it's scary, too, when you can't walk, like your feet can't move to the next step that you're taking because you're in too much snow.
I was, I was just going to suggest that one of their biggest problems is how to pay for street repairs.
Yeah.
Every year.
Every year, I mean, we have, you know, we have limited funding, we don't have it in a, a general funding, uh, stream, or there's no current bond issue for that, so essentially it's a combination of the CDBG and the liquid fuels is what we're running on for street paving. You know, CDBG is a annual allocation that we apply for every, every year, typically in January, I think those is when we submit those, you never really know for sure what you're going to get.
That's the whole thing.
And then that has to be, uh, that has to be, those monies have to be expended in the appropriate area. And the liquid fuels money, you know, is another one, so, but that's always a, a need to, I think, look out for the future is a, a recurring revenue stream to fund, help fund street paving.
And we know we need it because we get reports all the time on how horrible the conditions of the roads are, and we continue to tell them that we don't necessarily have funds to pay for those, that we have to find the money and repair as we can. It's not a good enough answer half of the time when residents are upset, but it's what we're working with, unfortunately.
So if there aren't any other questions, uh, do you want to move on to parks? We're going to try to get through all the way to refuse.
We could, do we need to hit Payton, we could hit Payton's sign real quick.
There you go.
That's on page fifty-five.
Looks the same, good job.
Okay, any questions on Payton's sign? If not, we'll just, I don't think there's anything to change here, okay?
People in Greengard are really upset because the bike paths are unplowed. Just a joke, never mind.
Okay, uh, municipal.
Colonel Levity never hurt anybody.
Municipal garage, uh, seven nine, uh, code seven nineteen on page fifty-six. Couple, couple things to note there, um, we, we'd have the two, uh, replacement refuse compactors did arrive in twenty twenty-four. And then, um, if you look at your handout, real quick, if you, if you want to, on, uh, page, uh, forty, I'd like to report, uh, just, we, we just, we just. I'd like to report, uh, just, we, we just, we just added, uh, another client. Uh, late, I believe it was last month, uh, Mill Creek Township, uh, reached out to us about offering, uh, services for this. So we, we executed an agreement with them. Obviously our, our needs come first. But, uh, I'd like to, council didn't know, I wanted to make sure that you were informed that there now would be number fifteen on that list there. That office, we just have a couple increases there, forty thirty-five and, uh, which is our supply account and on our service account also fifty-six. And those are just basically reflective of the costs that we incur in that office.
I was really impressed. Great for our council. I got bad information about the municipal garage and then jumped in and looked at all the numbers with good information. And that's, that's a good, really good asset for our city.
The fact that they can work together.
Yeah, and I mean, that, that office in particular, we, we have, we have twenty-two FTEs in there and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this, these guys were working the two around the clock also the whole time. They never quit.
I can't, I can't remember off the top of my head what the numbers were, but when I looked at it my first year on council, I think it was like forty percent of the work was done, you know, for other municipalities, like forty-two percent, like there's a, a small revenue spread that we get where, where there's fifteen places sort of subsidize. It's just a very small percentage. But it, it works out well for our city and they're available for our plows. Like that's really good.
Chains of plows, we were, they were busy. Yep. So did a great job in there. That's, any questions upon, uh, fleet and maintenance? We can move over to Bureau of Public Building Maintenance, uh, seven twenty-three on the next page.
Page fifty-eight.
Yeah. Let's see here, we had a couple small increases there in, uh, office supplies operating. The, okay, so I, I see here we have a incre- forty forty-one, uh, and this, this goes back to, uh, Tyler's question about the, uh, explanation of professional services and engineering. I might have, I, I'm going to do a detailed breakdown for council, but on line item forty forty-one, I had put seventy-five thousand dollars in here for, uh, specifically for Miller Brothers. Uh, so I'll take a look and compare that to the other fifty thousand and just make sure that we're on, on par or if we need to pare that down a little bit. But in particular here, uh, there's a couple roof concerns up there that I wanted to have professional services to have those looked at by a structural engineer. One of them is that building on French Street that you might have seen that has, uh, openings in the roof. It's essentially falling, it's falling in. Um, I believe that roof needs to be looked at. And then also, um, if council remembers, there was a collapse out on State Street where the brick facade fell out. Um, we did an emergency repair with that and, uh, there's also some, you know, we want to have that roof checked out as well. There's a couple other things in there that we want to have looked at. So I will, that, that's the purpose of that line item really is for structural, uh, evaluations in, for our public building.
Jase, I'm glad we're looking at that. Why didn't we look at that before we made the purchase? I'm just a real estate broker. I don't know.
I, I can't.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You weren't involved in it, I guess. But that's something we, we better start looking at because we're buying places with tons of material that we have to get rid of, uh, asbestos, you name it. Uh, people are walking away from the thing and we're holding, you know. I know there was another game in town for Miller Brothers, but that's not the highest and best use of that robbery. And we did it because it was there and it was cheapest supposedly. That, that goes another direction. I'm just saying, you're doing your job and I commend young delays on. So I'm just trying to bring these things up. As you, you know, you're finding these things that we have to do, but they should have been found before we went forward with it. That's, that's my point. How many more surprises are we going to get before we get to where we're going? Not your fault again, Jason. I'm saying that. I'm just telling you. It's kind of tiresome.
You see, there is a note there under the communication budget that there was a twenty-one hundred dollar add-on. It gets explained underneath the line item. That's why it goes twenty-five up to twenty-seven one. There's actually an explanation in there.
Could you explain, um, forty fifty-nine? So we've spent, there's a lot of budget, two hundred sixty thousand, it's been eighty-one, asking for two hundred sixty thousand again, which is double what was, well, more than double for twenty twenty-three. But we do have more expenses that we just haven't calculated in there yet.
I'm looking at it right now. Let me look.
It was eighty-one as of the end of October. That's our, that's our janitorial.
Forty fifty-nine and, um, what's, what's the seven twenty-three or seven?
Yes, seven twenty-three.
Well, we're over budget now.
I just signed some bills, not too long after the janitorial service.
Yeah, that was a month ago when we put those numbers together.
Spent a hundred eighty.
We've got a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar, we've got eighty thousand that's encumbered.
Okay.
And we've spent, um, let's see, we spent about a hundred thousand in the last month. For South Central.
South Central.
Do we have a line item for the janitorial services?
It's, it's paid out of.
In the other services, I believe.
Paid out of forty fifty-nine.
Yeah.
Yeah. No change in FTEs, which I believe is the case throughout all these budgets that I have.
You don't use Chuck's of Zisk anymore, right?
Well, we, we actually did during the recent snow event.
Okay.
He had, he had a, that consulting contract that essentially went through all twenty twenty-four. So he came in and helped, helped out at the Bureau of Streets for several days there during the worst of the,
Okay.
Of the event.
You can still get like free consultation from him. You just have to know which dock he's at with his boat in the summer. Mostly just hanging out in his boat nowadays and riding his bike.
Okay, uh, now to parks. And.
Can I pull asleep on the refuge? Can we talk about the garbage collection?
We didn't get enough. End of the block.
I'll, I'll wake you, I'll wake you up.
Just, I'll, I'll mention a couple of things about parks. Um, we'll have, we had the Ruby Shaw, uh, playground equipment and new fence installed there this year for twenty-seven thousand dollars. And then, um, some new playground equipment that we, uh, ordered for Walzac. And that will not be in until a little later and then that, that project would actually happen in twenty twenty-five. Summer rec program was a, was a big success up there for the Bureau of Parks again. Um, we had, uh, JFK Center, spoons basketball, uh, Footlights Theater, uh, Westwood Racquet Club, the Crime Victim Center, the YMCA Learn to Swim, and then the YMCA Kids Club. I could, I could be forgetting one or two, but if I am, it's not intentional. I think I covered them all that I know of.
Golf lessons for kids? Is that a summer rec?
Golf, yeah, golf lessons at J C Martin for kids was another one out of summer rec. As far as the budget goes, had an increase in heat, light, power and water. Reynolds. That's, that's essentially, a lot of that is the portable restrooms. Comes out of that one there, which, by the way, the, we had the Eclipse. When that happened, we had, we had the, a lot of portable restrooms were put out a month early, but there was actually a reimbursement that we received on those from.
There was a grant.
Visiteery or what was that? Yeah, I can't recall what the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You did.
They did give us a reimbursement for, to help out with the cost of those.
And I would like to, excuse me, like to see the portable restrooms as much as possible since we don't have public restrooms in some areas. So it's really needed, really needed.
So several of those went out. The Eclipse was April, I should, April eighth, April eighth. And, uh, so a lot of them went out a month early for that event. And, and a lot of the key parks where they, especially where they were sort of encouraging people to gather for the viewing. The other change here, uh, machinery, equipment, forty seventy-eight. We actually used this line item in twenty twenty-four to buy a couple of X mark mowers. They were not in there, but we did a, we did a, uh, shift from another line item to purchase those two mowers. Um, we decided to go ahead and leave that forty seventy-eight in the budget. Uh, in twenty twenty-five, Parks is in need of a brush hog. So, um, but actually you can see there, the thirty thousand dollars, that was the, the cost of those two mowers. Um, and we decided to go ahead and leave the forty seventy-eight account in Parks. Budget for ten thousand dollars, which I believe is the estimate that we, we received on that piece of equipment that we'd like to have in twenty twenty-five. And actually it's listed under there. Actually, yeah, calls now as brush hog. So that's what that's for.
Do we need more of those, um, lawn mowers and things like that?
Like the X mark mowers?
Because maybe it would help out with, um, like the blighted properties too. Can we use them for that?
Well, the redevelopment authority does mowing on a lot of those, those properties that are owned by them. We wouldn't, we wouldn't have the resources in Parks, the manpower to undertake that mowing, I think is the, the concern. We do have contract mowing that we do with Yardmaster that occurs every summer as well. So I believe those two mowers that we, we received this year kind of put us at pretty good footing on that for now. It's just really a combination of the equipment, but also we're kind of where we are with man. We can't really take more on because of the manpower in the parks. We really, it's, it's a pretty light office there. I believe we already have, I believe it's seven Teamsters. Yeah. So it, it runs pretty lean. There's some other, other various people that are budgeted in there, but there's only seven Teamsters. So there's nothing else but Parks would do shade tree, uh, on page, uh, sixty-two. The only change that you'll see here is historically we've budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars, or at least in twenty twenty-four, uh, under the fifty-six account. We did split that off into a supply account and a service account because there are, uh, landscaping supplies that Sarah purchases throughout the year. And, uh, so we split that off so we'd have more of a supply service, which is reflective of all the other budgets that we typically see. But no change in the bottom line there. You can see we're holding our own.
Did we give her a raise? Because everyone else seems to be getting raises.
She, she was, uh,
Come on, Sarah.
She was, uh, but one of the other few that we had, well, in public works, we don't, I believe it was the standard for, was two and a half percent for non-bargaining. But Sarah did get a, an additional increase. Looking for where she, she's not actually budgeted.
She's.
She's in refuse and sewer. So we, we could get, we could talk about that when we get to, or we could, I guess, look it up. Do you remember what that, what that amount was for her?
What the increase amount?
Yeah.
She made a lot of folks happy with those recycling bins.
Thank you.
But she goes out and she talks to the citizens, which is really wonderful.
She's a big hand in a lot of, a lot of things. Recycling grants, uh, cost savings, the solar panels that were, were placed on, uh, Central Fire Station. Uh, the tire recycling event day is held every May. A lot of the grants, but also all the grant paperwork and the, and the backend reporting on those grants, the closeouts on them. Arborist. She, she carries, she wears a lot of hats.
Just under, uh, just under five thousand.
Okay, yeah, Lisa had the number there. You'll see that increase reflected in the, in the refuse and recycling budget.
Looks like she got a pay cut in the sewer budget.
I have a feeling that's a direct on her.
Yeah?
Her rates, uh.
Okay. We ready to, I think we're ready for proprietary. I skipped one there. So that.
You've got it.
We're on to proprietary, uh,
Seventy-one.
So that we're going to have, we're going to have three. We're going to have, uh, Stormwater, we'll talk about refuse and golf. So we'll go ahead and start with, I think Stormwater's first. It's going to be on page seventy-one. Couple of highlights in that office, uh, in twenty twenty-four, looking into twenty twenty-five. Uh, Stream Bank Restoration Projects. Uh, we have one at, at Roma Park that's currently in design on Cemetery Run. We have another one on Garrison Run that's located down by the wastewater treatment plant, also currently in design. Both of those projects have a combination of funding, um, Commonwealth Financing Authority, WRPP grant, which is Watershed Restoration and Protection Program. They gave us two thousand dollars apiece for each of those projects. Then the one project, the second one I spoke of down at the treatment plant has a ARPA grant, H two O, for about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Kicked in on that one. Our Stormwater budget is set to contribute fifty thousand dollars to a Stream Bank restoration on Cascade Creek. That project is actually, is being spearheaded by the P A C Grant Organization. The city is a partner in it. And again, these projects all benefit our stormwater management requirements that we have for sediment reduction as part of the NPDS permit that we hold under our MS four program. Uh, there was a litter trap installation down at the wastewater treatment plant that happened this year. And that was a, uh, E P A grant that we had received the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And we got other projects in the works with Stormwater. I think I think council is aware that there's some stormwater work needed as part of the Cockwood Bridge. And that was part of the funding for for that project. In the Stormwater Fund, we have. I don't know if council realizes any questions there on any of the allocations. It's a new fund, you know, I think we're in year.
Two, three.
This will be the third year.
Third year, third year.
As always, we're trying to build up the fund balance so that we've got. A healthy fund balance, not only to work on preventative maintenance, but also to handle any emergencies that arise. If if we hadn't had that A R P money when Garrison Run. Blew out.
Yeah.
This something like this would have paid for it.
I do have one comment there under forty seventy eight. We have the four hundred thousand dollar budget there. We are eyeing a a street sweeper that we're in desperate need of. And a also a contribution towards a mini excavator. Both pieces of equipment will will definitely help our stormwater program. Streetsweeper is self explanatory. And also the mini excavator to help clean out some drift catchers. Litter booms, things like that. Any questions on any more questions on Stormwater? Right now, we're still really benefiting of the the A R P money we still have has been like Lisa spoke about, that's still. We still have some of those funds left in that stormwater allocation out of A R P. So that's sustaining us really for now, but that as that money gets spent out. This is a huge help because we're actually building up that cash reserve. Because stormwater projects are very expensive. So when you do them, you expend a lot of money very quickly. So.
And they're running right now okay after the storm and.
The snowstorm, the the snowstorm? Well, yeah, I mean, we had a we were kind of kind of lucky with that rainy event that it was. It it wasn't a real hard downpour yesterday, it was manageable. So you had the snow melt. We were we were really making some contingency plans for flooding. In order to dig some of those snowbanks out if we needed, so that we didn't, the water could get into the drains. But turns out we had just enough melt, I think, Sunday. To get us a little bit ahead of game and then when the rain came, it it really wasn't too bad. It was a ponding on the roadway, but. We were able to, the sewer crew really did a nice job there getting ahead of that. Okay. Refuge said, I didn't forget.
I know, I'm here. Leanne, hurry, whoopie.
Is that what's next?
I do have a question before you start, though. I asked this question a number of weeks ago. Have we seen a difference as far as our tonnage goes with the glass being pulled out of a lot of our dumping, so to speak?
Well, I have some, I have some numbers here.
I just understand that.
I don't know if I have.
It might be expanding that if they expand it, it might even save us more.
Okay, well, I'll start with that one then. I have, so right now, the the prism glass recycling, the drop off locations. So there's three. The one I personally have used is the one at the Clement Park Avenue. Up by the zoo off of at West Forty First Street. And then there's a Boys and Girls Club. This is a public, there's fifteen fifteen East Lake Road. And also there's a bin down just west of the Sloppy Duck. They have one down there. So as of October thirty first. We had with those three bins, we had eighty three tons of glass. Now, those are, it's a flat rate pickup, it's seventy dollars every time that they come and take it. So really, the cost of those of the prism was only three thousand eighty dollars for the city. That was again through the end of October. So I don't know if that exactly answered your question, but.
Yeah, if that tonnage had gone into up on the hill.
Right, it would be, and I'll talk about refuse, the rates here in a second. So.
Twenty thousand.
Actually, I think, let's go ahead and jump right into those. Think I had it. Yeah, so let's talk the weight, the the tipping fees for waste. There was an increase in March from fifty five dollars and ninety cents a ton. To sixty one dollars and fifty cents a ton. And I I have latest numbers on that. I don't know if if council wants to hear them, I'll I'll say what they are, but. Otherwise. Large item pickup, that uses the same tipping fee rates as the regular refuse waste. So that would be currently at sixty one fifty. And then recycling. There was an increase in the recycling rate also in March. Hundred and thirty one a ton increased to hundred and fifty a ton. So those are our. Our what we had in the beginning of twenty twenty four and then where we're currently at now with that, I guess, first quarter increase that happened.
Hey, let me just run those numbers out there. You said it was three thousand bucks for the pickup the glass of thirty one hundred?
Thirty one hundred.
You said that was eighty one tons and then we would have been paying fifty dollars apiece for those. So that's four thousand bucks. We saved a thousand bucks with those glass nets. Is that right?
If they had gone to the, using the landfill.
Yeah, if it had gone to the landfill, we're talking a thousand dollars total.
Per ton?
No.
Thousand total.
Yeah.
Everybody stuff takes your glass to place, huh?
But we're getting penalized for recycling because that's the most expensive one.
Labor intensive, it's not very valuable.
It is, actually.
But keep doing it, it's good for the environment.
I'm just curious how many residents know about those bins, because I know there's still a lot of people who just throw the stuff in the trash.
There is a, there is a page in the calendar. And we just checked it for the, what's that?
Which we just got today.
Yeah, so there's a section in there that I think believe lists the drop off locations. I think it also mentions about going to the Prism Glass website. That they could go on there to for maybe additional information on locations to drop off.
Plus Sacramento has a unit.
And we just have the city calendars in the lobby, so people can pick those up.
Plus Sacramento's on.
They must be, they must have their own. They must, they must pay for that service. I'm not aware of us.
First is drop them off, there's bins there. That's why I was confused as to, you know, if we're getting all this glass out, we should receive even more money. More than a thousand?
Thousand, yeah.
My recycling bin is still under snow from Thanksgiving. I put it out and we haven't seen it since.
It's there somewhere.
Also, just to get the tonnages out of the way at one at one shot, I suppose. Since we're talking numbers, our annual tire and electronics recycling event that happened on May fourth. We collected almost thirty two ton of tires and thirty five ton of electronics. Another successful, it seems like it's very well received by the community.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, have we looked into possibly doing two a year versus the one? Maybe one in the spring and one in the fall that way?
That question has come up, I believe that event cost us twenty. I have all, I probably have all the numbers here, I believe it was about twenty three thousand dollars to put that event on. Like everything else, it comes down to cost. I know it is a popular event.
I mean, ultimately, if we don't give our residents an avenue to get rid of it, they just abandon it in alleyways or in empty lots or. Abandoned blighted properties, so it's like if we don't give them an option, then they're just gonna figure out where to put it. Whether we like it or not, we're still gonna have to pay for it, so.
Yeah.
I mean.
Tires is a problem.
Yeah, I see a lot of abandoned ones all over the city.
Well, we could look at it.
What was the tonnage of the tires and the electronics again?
Excuse me.
What was the numbers for?
Oh, thirty thirty one and it was actually thirty one and a half ton of tires and thirty four and a half ton of electronics.
Was that the date of the fights?
May fourth.
Whatever the whatever date it was.
There were fights over that and there were fights over the bins.
Should have charged them for.
See here. I'll just mention for everybody that the Holiday Tree Collection is scheduled. For Wednesday, for Christmas Day, Wednesday through Thursday, January sixteenth. And again, that information that information is would have been printed in the calendar as well. Let's see, so I guess on to on to the details of refuse.
Is there no leaf pickup?
Leaf pickup?
Yeah, another one, the one that was missed.
I I guess, yeah, we we that that last compost pickup got missed because of this snow event, so. If if residents put the leaf, the compost out there, I mean, we'll we'll take it. I'm not sure, yeah, because it was it was one week shy, I believe, from what the schedule was. So there could very well be some leftover compost that people have that they weren't able to get out because of this week, so.
They're saying this Sunday, they're gonna take everything like normal. Because first it started just garbage and then they added recycling.
Well, we haven't taken, we have, we were back on regular schedule Sunday night.
Yeah.
Yeah, recycling and refuse, but it's 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 roughly. What they tell me is is pretty much double the volume, which is what everybody expects because we missed a week, so.
Yep. Iglood, around the days.
So you jump into the budget then. Line item four thousand and seven. There was a, that was just a, that was just an error in last year's budget. We had to move forty five thousand dollars, I believe council remembers that, we did that right out of the gate back in January. Just a miss last year, so. That number is reflected in the twenty twenty five. That's for our shift differential wages. Small increase in tolls. Machinery equipment under forty seventy eight, we have a couple more compactors budgeted in there just to keep our fleet up to par. We got, you know, the trucks are aging, so, you know, they age out and as they age out, they need to be replaced.
These aren't the electric ones, are they?
These are not the electric ones. That's correct. I think that's all I had in that part. We could go over and talk F T Es. So on page eighty three of your book. I believe council, we we talked at the finance committee meeting back in August about an F T E. Adjustment increase. And so we'd gone from, we'd added two individuals in that office. So the twenty twenty four budget complement was thirty two point six. And we had added two individuals there, I believe they actually came on board in late August. Following our finance committee meeting and we're currently at thirty four point six. Those two individuals were have been really outstanding. It's no surprise to us, they were, they were, they were great as part time employees. And we were, we were very happy to be able to bring them on full time. We were appreciative of the council. Cooperated with us to let that happen. They both worked out very well. What we've done here is is ask for two more. As you know, there's a cost for everything. But I believe that there's a, you know, it's it's the the part time refuse force that we use. Several of them are very dedicated, reliable, dependable. But then, on the other hand, it does bring. Issues with turnover, the no call, no shows. Safety and injury issues that that arise as you have sort of a transient workforce. Training issues, you have to invest in training the employees and sometimes they don't stick around. And we've had ones that, you know, show up and work, by the time you get them onboarded and trained, you know, they're gone. There's a lot of H R work that goes into it, you know, just in the the hiring process. Onboard them and then there's, you know, there's also obviously terminations that happen that happen. And then just in general, I spoke more about this at the finance committee meeting back in August, but. The H R limitations that you run into with part time employees. We currently pay them fifteen dollars an hour for a carrier and eighteen dollars an hour for a driver. And they are, you know, I think council understands what I'm saying when you you have to, you have to keep them. There's some certain things you have to do to keep them, make sure they ensure that they stay at part time status, because they do not receive benefits. They're not Teamsters.
Do you have any part time people as drivers?
We do. Drivers and carriers.
Takes a lot of training to drive those things.
Yeah.
When I worked the front desk, I noticed the turnover was high. People were coming in and out from that department.
So it's just part of the ongoing mission of of the bureaus to. Try to do the best we can with stability, having consistent crews. There, there's a lot of complaints that come in about misses, missed pickups. So you hope that with full time employees that, you know, you can lessen some of that because they become familiar with the routes. They have more of a investment in your job by with full time status, I believe. So again, you know, it's a, it's an ask of council. We were appreciative of the two that we were able to add last year and so we've asked for for two more in the budget.
They would be picked from your on call people, right?
That would be, that would be what we would hope, is that those employees would certainly apply. And there's a, like I mentioned, there's a certain portion of those employees that are are very good. And, you know, so I think we have a good pool there to choose from if they would, you know, hope to put their application.
They do a hell of a job, they really do.
So and I I believe those were the only F T, I think I had just spoke earlier, I said there were no F T increases in public works, but there there actually were, they were in refuse. I believe that was the only ones that we had.
So I'm I'm resistant to this, it's directly related to our refuse fee increase. When he points out that it's fifteen dollars an hour, eighteen dollars an hour, two thousand hours of work in a year, that works out to be thirty thousand or thirty six thousand dollars in cost. Your full time employees with a one point three million dollars basically between pension and group insurance total divided by full time equivalents, you're looking at about thirty five thousand in benefits alone. Just the benefits of a full time employee is the entire wage, wages and salary. Just the benefits of a full-time employee is the entire wage wages and salary of a season of a part-time hourly worker. Plus the salary of fifty-five thousand. So if we don't move forward with the four full-time, but we're moving forward to, I mean, that's the I mean, we're looking at we're looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars right there. I also would love to see the environmentalists moved out of this. I'd put her in the general fund even more so. This is only paid by residents, whereas the general fund's paid by residents and commercial properties. Or even as she's in the sewer fund, put her in the sewer fund entirely because that's by residents, commercial properties, and tax-exempt businesses. This one's the split of that, I think, is unnecessary and bad for our residents. I would rather see the part-time guys get a pay raise if you're if you're struggling to maintain them. Fifteen's still not not a great wage. I think you can do this with like a twenty and eighteen or something that you find more reasonable, talking to the administration and human resources. But I mean, tripling the cost, that's what we're looking at here when we talk budget and sal- when you know, we talk benefits and salary. It's tripling the cost. See, I mean, like if you came in here saying, hey, I'd like to pay him forty bucks an hour, we would all say, all right, that's crazy. But really, he's asking to change it to forty-five dollars an hour when you look at the entire compensation package. That's where that's where you lose me on this. So I'd like to I'd like to get rid of those two spots. And you never adjusted your seasonal wages. It's nine fifty-five last year. It's nine fifty-five this year. I think that's where you pay for your part-time wages.
It is.
So you reduce two full you reduce two full-time equivalents from your part-time workforce, but you never adjusted the wages for that. So I'd be fine leaving the wages there or maybe even bumping that part up a little bit to associate with a a raise that you find reasonable to help out your boys, your your folks. And not doing these two full-time equivalents. This is this is where this is our this is our refuse increase. It's not the entire thing, but we can cut it back a little bit on this. It's the only spot.
I understand what you're saying there, but I think historically you have to look at that. The garbage plant was the place where guys came in to come in. When I was in college a thousand years ago, I worked side by side with people. When I got out of college, those guys that I was working with were cops. They were working in City Hall. They were all over. This was the induction point. It's not that easy anymore because there's not that much going on. So we're at the mercy of these guys working hard. And it's not an easy job. It's not an easy job.
It's no hill I'm gonna die on, but this is the only spot.
I know what you're saying.
It's the only spot we have to cut back the refuse fee.
Thank you.
We'll like to find some spots, but that's.
Well, what if we we analyze the seasonal wages and tell you how much our calculation is on what that would come down?
Like an alternative proposal on this? So that council has maybe two options to decide between keeping the two full-time equivalents we gave you a couple months ago. I'm not not trying to pull anything back there, but I think it's I think it's worth considering not adding these two FTEs and maybe increasing the the wages for the rest of the seasonals so that we can keep that refuse fee from going up as much as what had been proposed. And I also would love to see the environmentalists not there. That's, I think, the worst spot for our residents to pair. I'd put her literally anywhere else. I'd love to see her in the sewer entirely for all I care. We are just by half of her salary there, point four percent of it.
She has she has a very heavy hand in recycling, but we can certainly look at at whether there's another place for her.
Anywhere but refuse. That's the worst spot for residents.
If we put her in the general fund, she ends up in the central services allocation, so maybe.
That's that's.
That goes in that gets charged to the refusers in the sewer and the stormwater.
Yeah, that's still better because.
It'd be a smaller percentage.
Yeah, whatever gets her as as little whatever gets the residents paying the least exposure to expenses. That's that's my preference.
Yeah, so she would be the she's the point six up there.
And I'm nickel and diming you on that one. This isn't.
That's a a demanding job, though. Freezing in the winter, stinky hot in the summer, you know, that's.
She's always there.
You know, they're doing football player work, but they're not getting paid that much.
Or we just do the full refuse increase. That's that's the other option, you know, like.
You gotta pay for them somehow. But yeah, we we would like to just see the comparison for the two because I know, like, sometimes enticing your seasonal workers is giving them an increase in the wage, especially with the cost of everything going up recently. Most people are trying to find jobs over fifteen an hour, so.
And that was increased a couple of years ago. I think it was just two years ago, it went from ten to fifteen.
Yeah, you had McDonald's.
Depending on which McDonald's you're applying to.
But you put in a couple of years and you get a job with a ninety thousand dollar salary package. Like, I mean, that's that's always been the draw to these jobs.
That's what I was going to earlier.
Right. Nobody's ever working these jobs for the fifteen dollars an hour. They're working the job for the fifty-five thousand dollar salary with a pension. You know, McDonald's doesn't have a step up to that.
Been into a job, yeah.
Yeah, we increased it two years ago, I believe, and then we implemented the tiers this year to pay the drivers more than the carriers.
Yeah, we did have that. That that bump to eighteen was done. I believe that was done this year.
This year, yeah.
But we'll look at it and maybe it needs to be bumped again.
Yeah, if it needs bumped again, but the full-time equivalency, because pension and benefits are are a huge burden to our city.
It's expensive.
It's a thirty-five thousand dollar package. So I would I would love to have another option here. Once again, I mean, it's whatever a majority of council feels about, but I I personally would be a no on that.
Okay, well, we'll get together and.
Get back to you.
Thank you.
Sure. So any more on reference?
Good.
We got one more, I believe, at golf. So golf fund is on, we'll go over to page eighty-five.
Jason, it's it's just me. We made a profit this year, right?
Uh, our our revenues are up.
Yep.
Our revenues are up. So what we have, the figures look like seven hundred and sixty thousand. And that was split five forty out of the Downing course and two twenty out of the J C Martin course.
And current well, currently we are in the black as of the end of November. So there is a almost forty-five thousand dollar surplus.
I I just recalled before I had been elected to council that it was always going back and forth on the fact that the golf course was costing us money. And then we did a change and then now we're the third year in a row we've been successful and, you know, making sure.
We had we campaigned against each other two cycles in a row. Nineteen, it was a a nice issue because it was a loser for like three, four years in a row. Covid hit. People started golfing outside again. And then in twenty twenty-one, we weren't able to talk about it because it was like, hey, uh, gotta get rid of golfing because we're making money on that. Whoops, never mind.
And now we might lose one of our golf places.
No.
With the zoo?
It'll it'll stay with us. That's that's way too soon to be talking about that. You're referring to the fact that the zoo authority and Civic Center, your events are talking about saving the zoo, which is something that we all have to talk about doing. But not at the expense of a golf course or anything along those lines.
Or losing anything that.
It's not for today's budget, though, and you have more meetings about it.
As of right now, it's good. It's safe in city possession.
We're meeting in the morning again.
With golf, I'll just say I don't think there's anything noteworthy in the really in the line items of the golf budget. I'll just have a couple of talk a couple aims to mention is we had a a five percent approximate increase in the for the start of the twenty twenty-four season. And that was both the greens fees and the and the season passes. I think anybody here is a golfer that that buys the season pass or or plays there probably saw that we did have an increase back beginning of the season.
We get a lot of feedback once again for increasing fees. I'm sure that from sixty-five guys.
Is that who made the profit off of this year?
I do get.
Did a real nice job.
Comments on that, though.
It's a real nice job. I would like to see more programs with youth because that's what built J C Martin over the years.
Ryan Bickel has been doing a really good job out there.
We also had the successful continuation of the Glow Golf. And I believe I mentioned earlier when I talked about Summer Rec, when we did parks, that the youth clinic that was held.
Did you guys ever get the special permit license for for containers for the golfing?
Wait, for from the liquor control board?
So you could sell some beer at Glow Golf? That never worked out this year?
No, because we didn't have a large enough space sitting area. There's certain criteria that you have to have. We looked into it.
Yeah, no, I remember you looking into it and obviously if it'd come through, I probably got a phone call from someone to invite me in case I get complaints like that.
Have you ever heard of blind golf?
Oh, yeah, 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 I've heard of that.
Now, the when you get to the cutting green, the hole is this big. And there's always someone there to guide them from the tee. But once you get there, you got a gigantic cup. I have it out in California. I haven't been out there yet.
I thought this was leading to a joke, Mel. I really did. Waiting for the plug, I don't know.
And the only. The only remaining public works is our our liquid fuels fund. There's really nothing to talk about here, but it it's reflected on page eighty-six, thirteen account, but I believe that that's it for the walk-through of the public works budget. If council has any questions or wants to go back and revisit something, we can do that.
Thank you so much, Jason, for presenting to us for the last two hours. We appreciate us doing all of the makeup that we missed last week. Now we know, you know, what the ask is and what to prepare for the next couple of emails that we'll receive when you do the breakdown for the professional services. And I don't know if council had any other questions in regards to what was presented, but I'm pretty sure they all have your email address, so they will be in touch. I know Tyler is infamous for reaching out after the fact, so if you get it, you know.
The only thing else I'll mention, because I forgot, but on, I think council, I'll just mention it. Budget handout, page forty-six, forty forty-six has the refuse rate comparison. And so just just see if you can kind of see that in there. And they have us at with with the increase of seventy-seven, correctly, sir?
Oh, it's it's.
Seventy-seven, seventy quarterly.
Oh, we're just beating everybody, huh?
And then you can go down through and you can see the comparison there and just something to to keep in mind as you as we continue to.
Surrounding areas, but they're paying.
Eighty-nine, one hundred.
Lawrence Park has a B, but.
Lawrence Park's so small.
Thank you for the comparison. It's always great.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
The only thing I wanted to mention was I think somebody mentioned that we keep undershooting our budget year after year and, you know, kind of wondering whether we were padding it or not. We're and I always tell you that we're one storm away from going over budget.
And this is the year that we got to see it happen.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. On Thursday, the twelfth, we will be going over to city council, the clerk's office, development services, and code enforcement. Thank you. Have a good night.